Okay. Thank you very much for coming. We're going to begin the April 18th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' Public Hearing. Could we please have roll call?
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
Here.
Commissioner Odeoricio.
Here. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second, you have to press the button. Technology.
Oh.
Turn this today.
Already forgot.
All right. Moving on, we don't have any awards and presentations. We're going to go to public comment. This time, citizens who are signed up can speak. You have up to two minutes. Do we have anyone signed up?
Commissioner, we do have several people signed up to speak.
Okay. If you could, just go ahead and start on that list.
The first person is Jennifer Blankenship.
Hey, Ms. Blankenship, if you would please come to the podium, state your full name and your address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Three minutes. Good morning, Board. My name is Jennifer Blankenship. I live at 76 and Leyden Street in Commerce City. I have a speech prepared this morning. I've lived in the townhomes at 76 and Leyden Street for 30 years. I'm a mother of an 11-year-old boy who goes to Monaco Elementary. I'm also a registered and licensed EMT. Seven days ago, I was on a walk with my dog, walking north on Leyden Street. I did not hear or witness the impact of Cara being hit. However, I noticed a woman who appeared scared and began running away from the scene on Leyden Street, which was my neighbor. As I looked back at her and felt confused, thinking, what is she doing? I then became suspicious of my surroundings. I look forward to the home across the street as people are standing in their yard with their hands covering their face and mouth, as in they're in disbelief. In a distance, I hear someone screaming, she got hit by a car. She got hit by a car. Immediately, I released my dog's leash, and I ran to this young girl lying on the side of the road and yelling for people to call 911. Another girl was on scene performing CPR. I knelt down at Cara's side and checked for breathing and a pulse. There was nothing. I looked into Cara's eyes. They were fixed, gray, and hazy. From my experience as EMT, I could tell immediately her life was already gone. We continued to administer care. Once the Adams County Sheriff arrived and overtook CPR from the young girl, I still remained on at their side. I asked the officer if he had a BVM, which is a breathing apparatus, in his patrol car. He said no. I continued to check for a pulse intermittently as the officer continued CPR. Once the paramedics arrived and took over care, I was hoping they would do what we call load and go in emergent situations. They did not. They continued to provide lifesaving measures on the side of the road. This only confirmed to me that she was gone. We do not transport the deceased. After 20 minutes of them attempting to revive her, they covered her body and face with a white sheet while her body lay lifeless on the road. My son is a fifth grader at Monaco Elementary, and daily he crosses this road. Many times, I have walked him to school, and cars do not stop. Many of times, we have been actively crossing in the middle of the road, and cars still proceed by us without a care in the world. I measured 76th on Google Earth. This road from Highway 85, Frontage Road, to Monaco Street is 3,708 feet of straight road, which equates to a little over 0.7 of a mile, plenty of room for anyone to catch speed if they want to. They should not even have the option to do this. The night of the tragedy, I spoke with the investigator. He said, from his 20 years of experience, he could tell from the home ring doorbell camera that captured this incident, the car was easily going 55 to 60 miles per hour on our residential street. My friend and I have been out here tirelessly, using our own time, gas, and efforts to get as many signatures as possible to up security in the area, or safety in the area, excuse me. We only needed 50 to 100 signatures, but we have over 800 at this point, because we will not stop until we see changes. Actions speak louder than words. Please keep your word to make changes, so no other parent, person, or child has to go through or witness the horror we saw that night. I am sad and angry that it took this tragedy for us to be here. I hope Cara's life creates a change that we need around the school. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blankenship.
Brandy Valdez.
Ms. Valdez, if you would please state your full name for the record and your address.
Good morning, Board. My name is Brandy Valdez, and I live at 7550 Kearney Street in Commerce City. I am also a parent from, I have three children in Commerce City, two that go to Monaco and one that goes to Adams City Middle School. I guess I'm here today to kind of plead to you guys, because, you know, for so long, we have been begging and pleading for answers and help and action, and they have been met with blind eyes from Adams, you know, Adams County and also the Commerce City. And, you know, we need help. We need speed bumps. We need crosswalks. We need visible flashing lights. We need more paint, things that can, you know, help, and not only around the school, but also down our streets. I mean, we have people that treat it like the Autobahn Speedway and, you know, drag racing 70 miles down, you know, residential streets where we don't even want our kids to go out and play. And, you know, and it's really, it's really sad. This is a senseless crime that should have never happened. We should have had these implements already put in for years and years. Citizens have been asking for this and begging for this. And hopefully, this is the time that we can all act and all work together to get these and work together as a whole community. And I guess I'm just here to say, you know, please.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Craig Kim.
Councilmember Kim, if you could please state your full name and your address for the record.
Absolutely. Councilmember Craig Kim, Commerce City at large, 10856 Idalia Street, Commerce City, Colorado. So first and foremost, I want to start off with reading this to you guys. It says, Dear Cuz Cuz, tonight we are doing your memorial. The night after you passed, everyone is broken to pieces. My heart hurts so damn much, man. I can't believe this. I love you so much. You was my family. You're my homeboy. You're safe. Go dance in the clouds and always make, make everyone keeps us smiling. Your name will forever be known. You were something special. Always there for me, no matter what. Always make some, always make sure everyone was smiling. I love you, Carolyn. Kara Kincaid was 16 years old. She lived down in the South. I feel like there's such disparity down there. I be, I feel like, as far as what I, what I foresee, what I've seen from residents in that, who live in that unincorporated area, constantly being told, yep, we're going to do something about it, but now is the time for action. Whether it's speed bumps, whatever you want to call it, that needs to be in place. Something needs to be done down there. Last night, Commerce City, as our council, to include our mayor, we made it known that all schools within Adams County, I'm sorry, within Commerce City, within our jurisdictions, we are, we are asking our city staff to create speed bumps, speed measures in place, not sit, not just some study session, not just traffic studies, but action. It is time now. Something has to be done. We cannot just sit here and let this happen again. Imagine if it was your kids. I hear these family members. Last night, I wish you guys were there, because we had about 10 folks speaking about this issue, about this problem that we have, and it's a constant problem we have constantly. Annexation, I get it. That's a conversation we can have another time. Study sessions, I get it. That's a conversation we can have another time. Right now, it's time for action. Something needs to be done immediately, so we don't have another kid killed or hurt. There's a red Dodge Magnum out there, and I just want to say, somebody in this community knows where that, where that vehicle is, who that family, who that person is, and I hope, I hope, I hope he's found. I hope that coward is brought to justice and is prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristi Douglas.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. My name's Kristi Douglas, and I want to disclose that I serve as a council member for Commerce City. However, I'm here speaking on my own behalf as a parent myself. I had to listen to that horrific story that was told by someone who didn't leave the scene, who went to try to save a life, a young life that should have never had been lost. I've lived in Commerce City a long time now, and it's a place I love, I call home. I'm at large, and the reason I'm at large is because I love the entire city. It's, it's my home, and I know that the South is neglected beyond words. They deserve what everybody else just expects and takes for granted, and they don't get Just because you work really hard for a living, you might have to work a couple jobs just to pay the bills, doesn't mean that you're less than. In this country, we revere wealth. It's time that changes. Let's put our money where it needs to be, not with high-paying positions for people who step in and make decisions for people that they don't even know or care about. All they care about is their next paycheck. Come on, folks, we can do better. That's an enclave. Adams County is responsible, but Commerce City is, is there because it's, it's, it's part of us. But let's start realizing what's important in life, and that's life itself and this young girl, this family. Please, let's do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucy Molina.
This is Lucy Molina. I'm Lucy Molina from 6650 Clermont, also in the South. Thank you for your public service, all of you. I just want to piggyback on what some of our neighbors just mentioned and also ask you and beg you really to listen to my neighbors. As you know, I also have a 16-year-old daughter. We were, and I'm also now, I'm here as a mom of a 16-year-old daughter that is also a Lester Arnold, and I'm also sitting on the board for the Adams 14 district. And it's, uh, it's, we were sitting on a board meeting when this was taking place, and we had to cancel some things out because of this. But as you know, in the South, many, some of you have already been there with me, visiting and even hit doors at my community, and we are very much left behind. Perhaps if more lighting, when more, better situation as my, my neighbors have spoken, perhaps we could have avoided this senseless situation. It is heartbreaking, because I imagine even my daughter and my kids, and you know, Steve, I always tell them, they're not allowed to walk. We're not allowed to walk, not only because of the bad lighting, but, you know, we have two railroad tracks, we have semis coming here and there. So there has to be a lot more attention to the poor side of town here in Commerce City and neglected areas. I know that you have a lot of responsibilities, and I, again, thank you for your public service, and I again beg you to listen to the community. Muchas gracias. I bless you.
Thank you.
Chair, the last person signed up to speak is here for today's land use case.
Okay. So is there anyone that would still like to speak that didn't get an opportunity to sign up? Please come down now, except for the person here for the land use case, which is later in the meeting. Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to elected official communication. Do we have any elected officials that would like to speak? Let me get to...
Is it working this morning?
I think it's working today, so we're going to try this. Thank you for all your patience and grace, everyone. Let me go to speakers. Lynn Baca.
Thank you, Chair. So, good morning. I did not plan to speak this morning. I want to offer my condolences to the family and the community of Commerce City, and I want to thank those that came to the podium this morning to speak, those that have reached out to the Board of County Commissioners by email. This is tragic, and what I heard is a number of things, and I'm going to start with. It was recognized by many of the speakers this morning, and it saddens me tremendously to hear North and South Commerce City. We hear East and West Adams County. The question is, is how did we get here? Because when we are elected, we are elected for the entire representation of the community. The resources go for the entire community as a whole, and I struggle with this from my seat of the talks of density and where density is and where it is not, and where resources are spent and where resources are not spent. That aside is that unfortunately, this tragic event really brings to the forefront of why we are elected, and that is for the community's safety and well-being. And I'm looking over here specifically because many of the residents and council members that spoke are on this side of the room. We get really caught up a lot of the times. Energy and time is spent on legislation. Energy and time is spent on fighting metro districts and putting in moratoriums and recalling elected officials, and it doesn't take a tragedy for anyone to come and speak at any time to your elected body, whether it's a school board, a city council, or a Board of County Commissioners. Don't allow the political divide that we see for you to sit in your seat and allow things to fester to the point that it comes so explosive and tragedy happens that will bring us together again as a community. We are not shades of red, not shades of blue. We are all human. We walk and carry different hats. We walk different walks of life. We have different hats. We're sisters, mothers, fathers, aunts, uncles, nieces, cousins. We're all a community here in Adams County and in Commerce City, and it's time that we all come together as a community to resolve these problems and many others that are facing us. I would ask, I know that action was taken by the City of Commerce City last night. Unfortunately, we have approved today's agenda, but I would ask that the acting county manager this morning, Alicia Reese, we've seen several emails in our inboxes as Board of County Commissioners on actions that our staff is taking, that we do a follow-up study session, and that we have one of our town halls dedicated to the City of Commerce City. I would like to thank Craig Kim from Commerce City for sending the email to the Board of County Commissioners, a response by Commissioner Odeoricio. Prior to my time on the Board of County Commissioners, I did not realize Craig Kim, Mr. Kim, sent over a map, and the map shows, in many instances in the neighborhood, that in the intersections, the corner lots are in Commerce City, and the remaining lots are in unincorporated Adams County. I've not seen this, that side by side, we have residents in Commerce City, we have residents in unincorporated Adams County. That makes it difficult to respond as an agency. No one is to blame here. Everyone is here to solve and make, and come up with the best solution. I don't suggest we start with what the maps look like, but we start with what is in front of us, and that is specifically the speed bumps. I know Commerce City took action last night, crosswalks, visible flashing lights, and additional lighting. And I just wanted to end off with Lucy Molina. She's, she stated that her kids are not allowed to walk along the streets in Commerce City, that it's the poor part of Commerce City. Every city in our county has a poor part of the city. That makes me sad to hear that, Lucy, that I hope today that we find stability, we find solutions between the school board of Adams 14, City of Commerce City, and Adams County. I don't believe that speed bumps are the answer. If you are traveling at high rates of speed, you could easily launch a vehicle off a speed bump unintentionally. Will, over time, behavior change? Potentially, it would, but I would just ask that we give Alicia Reese and our staff an opportunity to work with Commerce City and the community of Commerce City to come up with the best solutions. So, thank you, Chair. Yield back to you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tedesco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to address a few things. One, thank you, Councilmember Craig, for reaching out and accepting a phone call from me and having a conversation. I thought you were very gracious in having that conversation. I also responded on social media. There's nothing that I can say, that I can do, that I can even contemplate that could change the tragedy that happened. But what we can do is change for our future, and we can do that. My question is not about blaming anybody. It's not about who did what and who didn't do what and who didn't annex and who annexed. You know, those are all questions of our constituents. If you're in an area and you want to annex, you can annex, but that's your vote. That's what you decided to do. It's not a mandatory thing for a county to say or for a city to say. It's for the voters and the people. I'm not pushing for that. What I am questioning, though, is this is not a isolated problem. This is not an issue of just this school. This is an issue of schools that we have in unincorporated Adams County across the board, whether it's off of Coronado Parkway, whether it's off of Henderson, wherever that may be. I drive by Henderson all the time because it's right behind Prairie View Elementary or Prairie View High School where my daughter went, and I see the cars speeding through that, that area as well. I see Coronado Parkway that has stop signs, but it has limited stop signs, maybe one or two. I see those types of problems. My question, though, is why have we not put up standards when schools are built to incorporate those safety mechanisms? I think we have an opportunity to address those through our standards, through what we do for schools, and how those schools are built, where they're built, and what those safety mechanisms are for that. As a county, we have a responsibility to be involved in that, whether it's on the county side, whether it's on the city side, or whether it's with the school. But we need to come together and set those standards so that we can set those safety standards in front when that school opens. I saw that school on Coronado get built. It was a brand-new school, and yet no new safety measures were ever put in around that school. On Henderson, there has never been any safety measures put in there. Now, granted, I've been a commissioner for 10 years, and I have addressed it. I'll accept, and I'll tell you that I could have done better. We all could have done better, and I think it's time we start thinking about it that way. Instead of coming and trying to blame everybody, let's come together and let's find some reasonable enforceable mechanisms so that we can put in all of these types of safety measures and we can protect our kids, and we can show the community that we care about what happens around these schools. I'm committed to that. I don't think we need, you know, I think we need to understand where this funding is going to come from, but I don't know that there should be a long, drawn-out process for implementing something. We see these protected lights in some of our municipalities on Chambers Road, and I think they work, and I think that they're very highly visible, both daytime and nighttime. And I think that the striping on the roads, that needs to be improved. I think that signage needs to improve. I think that speed bumps in certain areas absolutely should be implemented. Do I like speed bumps? I mean, if you're asking me, do I like to drive over them? No. Do I think that they calm traffic in certain areas? Yes. In other areas? No. But I think we need to have a very educated and, and, and decisive talk about where and when we should use those. And with that, I'll just tell you that, that I'm committed to making something happen here in Adams County, but I want to see it happen across the board, not just for an isolated area, because I think this problem isn't just isolated. Thank you.
Mr. Pinter.
Yeah, thank you. No, Commissioner Henry, did you want to go first? Are you sure?
Got you.
Okay. I'm sorry that technology gets in the way of our order and process sometimes. First off, condolences to the family. I, I don't know if any of Kayla's family are here. It's Kayla, right? Cara.
Cara.
Thank you, Councilmember Kim. It is Cara. You know, I have a teenage daughter myself, and I send her to school and her younger sibling, and your pain is really real, and you took time out of your day, maybe time off work, to come here and share stories with us, and I know that you're doing that and you're trying to not let this tragedy go unnoticed, and that change will come out of the community suffering and the pain that we're all feeling here. And you articulated it really well. Several of you shared really compellingly how this impacted you, and then, Ms. Blankenship, thank you. I can't imagine what you're going through. I know you're an EMT by training, but it's really different when it's in your own community and you're not on duty, and to come and share your story and what you witnessed and revisit that trauma to share with us and attempt to make change. And I gather that it's not the first time you've done it and that you are continuing to advocate for safety in your community. We will consider every opportunity to make this street safer. I'm looking at the map right now. I pulled it up, and it is Councilmember Kim who sent it over, and it is very obvious that there are these weird little carve-outs. We're going to have to ask our staff to come up with every idea. A couple have been tossed out, but surely across the nation, there are many ideas to keep schools safer. Commissioner Tedesco named that this is not the only school district in Commerce City where he lives and in the nearby area where this is happening. I also see it where I live, on the western border of Adams County, and we have a lot of schools in unincorporated areas, and this is not the venue to talk about why properties were annexed or not annexed, but it is an opportunity to talk regionally on how to do better. I'll also be reaching out to our sheriff. We're a little different in the county structure, where the sheriff is independently elected, and he directs his time and his staff time for interim safety and speed control, and we need to be reaching out to our school board to identify all these different schools and work collaboratively through their land use powers and our land use powers to implement safety measures that we all agreed on, whether it's the flashing lights in the crosswalks or it's speed bumps or traffic lights or however that is decided. There are a number of tools on the table, and what I'm hearing from you, the neighbors, is that none of them are being used to protect this particular school at Monaco Elementary, and we need to be working together with our school board to try to identify those areas as well as trying to make this street safer. And I'm sorry that it is a tragedy that brought us together, but I think everyone who's taken time to come and share with us how we can do better. It's really saddening with me that, wow, we're all going to search our, our, our best practices to make the streets safer. all going to search our our um, our best practices to make the streets safer. Somebody broke the law by a lot, you know? I don't know if it was 55 miles an hour. I don't know if it was 50 or 60 or what the number was. Somebody broke the law, and this careless driver who um, I am hearing is still at large, um, was so careless that it took a life. And it shouldn't have to be that way for us to come together to find safe solutions. And I want to thank everyone who took time out of their day to have this collaborative conversation, and I hope that working with our school board in Commerce City and our sheriff will be able to find some interim solutions and discuss some land use changes to make it safer, because you deserve a safe community.
Commissioner Henry.
Wow, what what can be said that hasn't been said already. Um, and I appreciate all the remarks that our commissioners have made that are up here. The community of Commerce City is very lucky to have two representatives that truly care about their community, um, that are at large. Very, very fortunate to have them. Um, make sure that it's not just going off to the side. So, I want to thank those those council members that came forward, um, taking time out of their day to come here, because a council member is part-time. They all have day jobs. So, thank you um, for coming forward and representing your community and ours as well as you have. Um, and I really, my deepest sympathies for your community to have to go through what you're going through right now. I have uh, was a council member at one time in the city of Thornton. I pushed for speed bumps. We got speed bumps. We have them in front of the schools. They have them in front of parks. They slow people down. I even had them because I had a very busy street myself. I had them in front of my house. You know, yes, cars will speed. They hit that speed bump. It's not very healthy for their car, especially if they're going 55 or 60 miles an hour. It's a way to slow traffic down. And I have tried to push that through here um, for a lot of years. I've been here also for 10 years, speed bumps. And you hear all the excuses in the world from our engineers on why you can't have speed bumps. It doesn't hurt. It does not hurt to have something that slows things down. Lights are great. People ignore lights. Stripes are great. People ignore stripes. Sometimes the only way you could stop a speeding car is by actually putting a hump right there where it needs to be. So, you have my, once again, I'll continue to push for those kind of speeding controls in our communities, especially in front of our schools and our parks where children are. I I agree that there is definitely a divide between south and north when it comes to disparities in actual services. I also agree that there is there's a difference in Adams County between southwest Adams County and the rest of Adams County. Um, you walk those neighborhoods, you knock on those doors, you see it. People work hard in those communities, and they have to work a couple of jobs, and it takes a lot for them to actually get involved in their community because they're tired after a long day of work, and they have to take care of their kids and have homework to take care of and everything else. It's hard for them to attend a community meeting. So, I thank you all for taking time yourself to be representing your community, and you have my promise that I'll continue to work hard on trying to control the speeds that are going on in our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Henry. Um, there's no question about this being a horrible tragedy uh, in a situation that unfortunately, as Emma said, sorry that tragedy brought us together. On the other hand, we have an opportunity, since we are together, to do good in the future together, and that means the people in the community. That means the school district. That means the city. That means the county, looking at both short-term immediate it uh, actions to take as well as medium-term actions to do all the studies and stuff we need. But the short term needs to be done now to address the immediate threat to safety while we continue to look forward to the bigger picture, long-term discussions, as Councilmember Kim's mentioned, about annexation and standards and policies and collaborations. But um, we we are committed, and I heard from every single city council member and county commissioner that I've heard from on this matter, that everyone is committed to working together to try to avoid these types of situations in the future. And so, I want to thank the community. I want to thank the guests who spoke from city council. Um, but most of all, the folks in the community, you've you've stood up and and you're helping address this issue so we can try to avoid these things in the future, and uh, we look forward to working with the with the community to try to do that. So, thank you all very much. We appreciate you. Thank you all for coming. Uh, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Thank you. We're going to reconvene the meeting. Uh, if anyone would like to stay in for the rest of the meeting, we have a couple land use hearings and some other business to um, conduct. Otherwise, if folks feel free to carry any conversations out into the hall. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So, moved.
Do we have a second? All right. Next, we have new business. County manager.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have two items for you today, starting first with a resolution authorizing first supplemental appropriations to the 2023 Adams County government budget, and senior budget analyst Purnell Olson will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, I'm Purnell Olson, senior budget analyst for Adams County. Before you, there's a proposed resolution authorizing the First Amendment to the 2023 Adams County budget. This budget amendment was discussed at public study session on Tuesday, April 11th, 2023. In accordance with state statute, and so residents have the opportunity for public comment and input, notice of this public hearing was published in the Northland Thornton Sentinel on April 13th, 2023. The proposed resolution is authorizing total budget appropriations in the amount of $72,890,761, broken out as follows. Take a big breath here because we've got a lot of funds to go through. General fund, $35,335,665. Capital facilities fund, $18,483,364. Golf course fund, $100,000. Fleet management fund, $2,202,491. Road and bridge fund, $1,351,317. Social services fund, $1,400,000. Developmentally disabled fund, $43,835. Waste management fund, $127,421. Open space projects fund, $4,978,891. Colorado air and spaceport fund, $8,070,375. Public health fund, $707,774,200, and flat rock facility fund of $20,000. Are there any questions?
Any questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion from Commissioner Baca and a second by Commissioner Pinter. We will vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up.
Our next item is a resolution approving Amendment Four to the agreement between Adams County and Bear Communications Incorporated, doing business as BearCom, in the amount of $675,000 for county emergency vehicle equipment and light installations. And our manager of fleet operations, Mike Gutierrez, will present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mike Gutierrez, fleet operations. In 2019, Bear Communications Inc., DBA BearCom, was awarded the agreement to provide and install emergency and communications equipment for all county emergencies. This agreement allowed for four one-year renewal options. Amendment Four is being requested with slight increases in some parts and labor for tuning. Facilities and fleet management has been very pleased with the services that BearCom has provided, and we would like to recommend that Amendment Four renewal option be approved in the amount to not exceed $675,000. Are there any questions?
Any questions for staff? If not, do we have a do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, hold on. Finishing the vote? All right, we got it. Thank you very much. I think that's it for county manager. No other new business. County attorney?
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, we would ask that we go into executive session today pursuant to Colorado revised statute 24-6, 402, 4B and E, for legal advice and instructing negotiators regarding treasurer litigation, and that executive session will be headed by Deputy County Attorney Doug Adelstein.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve, um, I guess as presented?
Sure.
Sure. We'll go with that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. We'll vote. Sounds good. It's passed. Congratulations. All right, next up, we have our land use hearings. Uh, we'll take a five-minute break and come back. Portion of the hearing. Uh, staff, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Nick Eagleson with the Community and Economic Development Department, and I'll be presenting the Watkins Compressor Station. This is case number RCU 2022-33. Uh, the request is for a conditional use permit to operate a major energy facility, specifically a compressor station, and this is in the A3 Agriculture Zone District and is located on approximately 8.3 acres of a larger 35-acre parcel. Here's a large aerial view of the site outlined here, and you can see Manila Road directly adjacent to the west, I-70 to the south, there's Colfax Avenue to the north, and then the Colorado Air and Spaceport you can see further to the north here. Uh, here's a closer aerial view of the site. Again, this overall is approximately 35 acres. The compressor station would be located on the eastern portion of those 35 acres, again on approximately 8.3 acres. Um, it would take access off of Manila uh, Manila Road, uh, and then would be about 2,000 feet to the east to the compressor station itself here. It's surrounded by an agricultural use to the south, a similar compressor station facility located to the southwest, and RV and boat storage directly adjacent to the west. And then again, Colorado Air and Spaceport is located directly north of Colfax Avenue here. And I did just want to point out on this slide, uh, in reference to the Colorado Air and Spaceport, that this property is within the airport influence zone, specifically restriction area one, uh, which does restrict any part-time or full-time occupied structures within that restriction zone. Uh, so the uh, uses on this property are limited by that restriction one. Uh, the current zoning, again, is A3 agriculture. Uh, A3 is also located to the north, south, and southwest portions. Uh, I-1 is directly adjacent to the west of Manila Road. This is the City of Aurora's jurisdiction to the east, and then this PUD to the northeast here is the Rocky Mountain Rail Park PUD, uh, which was approved a couple of years ago, and that provides uses, permitted uses, everything ranging from light, industrial to moderate and heavy industrial use. The future land use designation at the time of applications middle is mixed-use employment. It's mainly surrounded by mixed-use employment, again, with the exception of City of Aurora's jurisdiction to the east, and then the Rocky Mountain Rail Park, which is industrial to the northeast here. I went looking at the criteria for a conditional use permit approval. We looked to see that the use is permitted within the zone district, that it's consistent with the purposes of our standards and regulations, that it complies with any applicable performance standards, that it's compatible and harmonious with the surrounding area. Uh, any off-site impacts have been addressed, that the site is suitable for the proposed use, uh, that the uh, layout of the uh, site plan is convenient as well as functional, and that any adequate services to support the use have been provided. Uh, here's a look at the site plan that the applicant provided. Again, this would be the access road that comes off of Manila Road and then accessing the compressor station itself here. There is a smaller detention pond that's located south of the compressor station right along that southern property line. Uh, looking at the business operations that the applicant uh, has provided, they're again proposing four compressors, a slug catcher, metering equipment, dehydration equipment, and venting towers, and this would enhance the efficiency of moving natural gas through pipelines within this area. They are not preventing any type of venting flares on site. And then again, in reference to that restriction area one, uh, there are no proposed part-time or full-time occupied structures on site. Here's some photos of the site. Not a lot to see right now. As you can see, uh, looking at the top-left photo here, this is looking from Manila Road, uh, where that access road would begin, looking towards the east. Photo on the top-right is looking south along Manila Road. Bottom-left is looking towards the north. Again, the access over here to the right, and then bottom-right photo is looking towards the west across Manila Road. This is the RV and boat storage, and then this is the similar uh, use to the southwest site. Uh, during the referral period, we notified property owners and occupants within two miles of the subject site. A total of 73 notifications were sent, and staff did not receive any comments, and some of the referral agencies responding without concern include the Colorado Air and Spaceport, who did state that, uh, after looking over their proposed use, that they did not have any concerns uh, with the compressor station. And then we also heard from XL, CDPHE, as well as Tri-County at that time. Uh, this did go to Planning Commission for a public hearing uh, on March 23rd, 2023. Uh, there were a couple of questions regarding surrounding land uses in the area. Uh, we did not hear any public comment, and the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval by a vote of five to one. Uh, with that, staff does feel that the site plan is suitable for the area, and the layout is convenient as well as functional for that site, that it's consistent with the purposes of our standards and regulations, and that it is compatible uh, with the surrounding area. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with eight findings of fact, nine conditions, and three notes. Here are those findings of fact, and then just going through the conditions quickly. Uh, the conditional use permit shall expire on April 18th, 2043, so staff is recommending a 20-year expiration date on that conditional use permit. Uh, the conditional use permit would also expire on April 18th, 2024, if the use is not established on the property uh, through a change in use permit. And then prior to site disturbance and any sort of construction activities, uh, the applicant would need to go through the necessary construction and building permits. Uh, during construction activities, the applicant would need to adhere to any stormwater management plans on site. Uh, no venting flares would be permitted as part of the overall operations of the compressor station. Any fluids or spills or hydraulic and oil from maintenance of the equipment needs to be removed and disposed of at a facility that's permitted for that type of disposal. Uh, the maximum height for any infrastructure associated with the project shall be 60 feet, as shown on the approved site plans. Uh, any fugitive dust control mechanisms need to be in place, and that would include mitigation of that access road. And then any lighting uh, shall be arranged and positioned, so no direct lighting or reflection of lighting creates any type of nuisance in this area or to any adjoining properties right away. And then the three notes are there as well. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from Commissioners? Commissioner Baca.
I have a question, Nick. Um, the conditional use permit is in place for 20 years. Is that standard for this type of project?
I may let somebody else on staff that's seen conditional use permits for compressor stations speak to the expiration date, um, lifespan. I'm not certain, so.
Sure, and I I do remember when we were looking at the at this case, there is a compressor station um, right across the street, um, and we made sure to model the conditions and the expiration of similar to the one that was across the street. It's a very, it's a very similar context, um, very similar request, so we we wanted to be consistent in that manner.
Thank you for that.
I have a question. Uh, what was the no vote concerned about at Planning Commission?
So, I believe that Commissioner just had concerns with compatibility compatibility within this area and any surrounding agricultural uses.
Okay. Thank you. Eva Henry, I see it now. It works. It's working. You're doing great. You're doing
Uh, I want to say 2019. I could double-check to confirm, but it was in the past several years. Do you know, Kristy? Sorry. Okay, 2019.
If there's no one else on the board asking to speak or have questions, we will go to the applicant. Will the applicant please approach? Please state your full name and address for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and your service. My name is Matthew Norton. Uh, our office address is 13781 Pacific Circle, Longmont, Colorado, I do have a short presentation just to kind of introduce, uh, I think there's some new council members since the last time I was here, or commission members since the last time I was here. So, um, Williams has been uh, operating for over 100 years. So Williams has been operating for over 100 years. At any given time, we handle or transport about 30% of the nation's natural gas that we use to heat our homes, cook food, generate electricity. We have, like I said, over 100 years operating. Started in, based out of Oklahoma in Tulsa, but have offices and assets here in Colorado along the Front Range, as well as in western Colorado, and 26 states total. Here's a map of our assets across the country that go all the way up into the northwest, into Washington and Portland, as well as starting down in the Texas Ship Channel and going all the way up to the northeast delivering gas along the way. As far as Colorado and along the Front Range, I'd like to point out that as a company, in total, over the last 10 years, we've had over, or write out about $107 million in charitable contributions to over 8,000 organizations, with $15 million in matching gifts from employees to 4,000 organizations. And then, just in and of itself, for United Way, $27 million to over 150 chapters. Specifically, we are active in Habitat for Humanity here in the metro area. I myself am looking forward to volunteering again this summer. Boys and Girls Club, which we support, the Adams County Education Consortium, as well as the United Way. This does happen to be our, we do a big push in the spring for Volunteer Week, and so this is our Volunteer Week, actually, so. As far as compressor stations, just a kind of a quick and dirty description. So it's the heart of, of natural gas processing and, and moving, compressing the natural gas necessary for every stage of the natural gas process. It gives it the boost to help get from one point to the next by pressuring it up. It's, once it's compressed, it travels through pipelines, allowing it to continue to get to its final destination. There's some additional equipment that you'll note on the, on the drawing. Those include separators, filtration, dehydration equipment. It, it's there to remove the dirt, liquids, particles, any impurities in the natural gas stream so that the end user can, can use it the way it's intended. All of our facilities do meet or exceed industry standards and regulations. All employees and contractors on our sites do have stop-work authority and are encouraged to use it at their will without, you know, fear of retribution. We have a variety of safety systems specifically at our compressor stations to protect the public and the surrounding area, including emergency shutdown systems, safe work permitting processes, written procedures and energy isolation safeguards. We have a see-something, say-something mentality, so if you see it and it doesn't look right, it's on you to stop it, and we encourage that, no matter who you are, whether you're a state inspector that happens to be on site or an employee or a contractor or someone that we're giving a tour to. And like other companies, we work directly with our safety, sorry, with our local emergency responders to make sure that if there is an incident, that we all know each other well in advance and we're familiar with our plans and capability. The Watkins Station safety features, it is remote monitored through a SCADA, which is System Control and Data Acquisition System. Automatic shutdown systems are in place, we do have safety relief valves to prevent overpressure. We have multiple redundant safety systems, including manual shutdowns, which are the red buttons that you'll, you are at the site, you would see along the fence line and throughout the facility. All equipment and the station itself is electrically grounded to mitigate lightning strikes. We have comprehensive safety training program, detailed emergency response plans that are distributed to all effective jurisdictions. And we work directly with our local fire district representatives regarding those scenarios. We did one last year, and we're scheduled to do another one this fall in October. One thing I would add that just happened in the last couple of days that I don't have a slide for, sorry, Nick, that Williams did just participate with Orbital Sidekick in the launch of a satellite to have additional monitoring on our entire infrastructure system, up to and including tracking methane emissions. We have a goal of year-over-year reducing methane emissions from blowdowns or pigging activities or just normal day-to-day activities at our facilities, just to be a better neighbor. And it's, you know, in the world we live in, it's, it's good for business, so. I'm open for questions if you'd like, for now or later.
All right, any questions from the Commissioners for the applicant? Commissioner Pinter.
Oh, Commissioner Henry is ahead of me, actually, in line. Do not remove yourself from the, all right, well, the technology's, oh, I'm on the wrong one.
There you go.
There we go, I'm the one not using the technology.
Now, Commissioner Pinter. Okay.
Yes, you are older than I am, thank you for pointing that out. So on that fun note, looking through, thank you so much for your presentation and your detail, your emphasis on safety, remote monitoring, automatic shut-offs, release valves, all of that. If you could just spend a little bit of time talking about, have you had any safety incidents in recent memory at this site? And how did you handle them?
We have not had any incidents at this site. In fact, the most recent incident we had was an employee in a vehicle accident. Unfortunately, after hearing this morning's conversation. It is part of my job as the, as the operations manager to stress safety at every point of the day, up to and including driving safe, slowing down. When the roads are bad, like go slower than the posted speed limit. Don't worry about getting to work, let's just do it safe and do it right the first time.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Baca.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. It wasn't clear to me, and I apologize if I missed it. What does the activity look like on the site as far as employees? How frequent are they there? What's the duration that they'll be there, traffic, et cetera?
And I didn't cover it. So compressor station, they operate in the evening. With all the systems that we have in place, they're able to shut down. And so with that, we don't have to monitor, we don't have to have someone there 24/7. That said, we could expect one to two people being there about every day, passing through. We have instrumentation and electrical team that visit all of our stations that are, you know, either replacing equipment or doing, we have what we call PMs, which are preventative maintenance tasks that occur on all rotating equipment. Start-up and shut-down, there'll be someone there for that. I hope that answers your question. So a couple of trucks every day would, would be my first. You bet.
No other questions? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we would open it up for anyone who would wish to speak from the public on this particular matter. Do we have anyone signed up on this matter?
We do not.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this particular application? And now we're going to bring it back to the board for discussion and, and motion. Commissioner Tedesco? Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to move that RCU 2022-00033 Watkins Compressor Station be approved. I don't think, oh, nine conditions and three notes, eight findings of fact.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, thank you, Chair.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, now we'll vote. And that passes unanimously, congratulations, good luck on your project. Okay, next hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners, Nick Eagleson, Community and Economic Development Department. And I'll be presenting the Merit Trailers rezoning, this is case number RCU 2022-34. And this is a request for a zoning map amendment or rezoning for two parcels. They total approximately 7.3 acres in size, and they are requesting to rezone from Agriculture 1 to Industrial 2. Here's a large aerial view of the two parcels. You can see I-76 Brighton Road is located to the west, or to the east. Monaco Street directly adjacent to the west, East 96th Avenue here to the north, and then these are City of Thornton Lakes here to the west. Here's a closer aerial view of those two parcels. Again, Monaco Street directly adjacent to the west over here, I-76. You can see these two parcels to the east here are the current operations for trailer, Merit Trailers. They are accessed off of Brighton Road in this general vicinity here. I look in at the current zoning, again, both of these parcels are A1 agriculture, mainly, there's mainly A1 along Monaco Street that you can see here, and then I-2 industrial directly adjacent to the east, north, and south ends. The current Merit Trailers operation on these two parcels, that zoning is I-2, so this would be bringing these two parcels into conformance with the remainder of the operations on site. The future land use designation at the time of the application is industrial and was mainly surrounded by industrial, as you can see here. When looking at the criteria for approval for a zoning map amendment or a rezoning, we look to see that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, that it's consistent with the development standards and regulations, that it complies to the development standards, and that it is also harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area. For our I-2 Zone District dimensional standards that we look at for rezoning, we look to see that the minimum lot size requirement of two acres is met. Lot 3 would be approximately three and a half acres, and then Lot 4 would be approximately 3.7 acres. And that the minimum lot width is met, that minimum is 125 feet. Lot 3 would be 130 feet, and then Lot 4 would be approximately 141 feet. And then any building permits that would come through for either parcel, we would need to ensure that the minimum required setbacks are met, and that would be 25 feet from the front, 15 feet from one side, or five feet from the other, and then the rear setback is met, and that's a minimum of 15 feet. I hear some photos of the site. This is looking from Brighton Road towards the current entrance to the operations, looking towards kind of the northwest and directly west here. These photos are looking from Monaco Street, so top-left would be looking towards the north with the site located on the right. Photo from the top-right is looking towards the south. Bottom-left here is looking towards the northeast, you can kind of see those blue buildings in the distance there for the current operations. And then the photo on the bottom-right is looking directly adjacent to the west across Monaco. During the referral period, we notified property owners and occupants within 1,500 feet of the subject parcels, and a total of 47 notifications were sent. Staff did receive one comment that was in support of the proposed rezoning, and then referral agencies responding without concern included XL, RTB, and Adams County Sheriff. This did go to Planning Commission on March 23rd, 2023. We did not receive any public comment, and Planning Commission voted to recommend approval by a vote of seven zero. With that, staff does feel that the rezoning complies with the development standards and regulations and would also be compatible with the surrounding area, and is recommending approval of the rezoning with four findings of fact and two notes. And here are those four findings of fact and two notes, and staff is available for questions, thank you.
Any questions for staff? And none from the Commissioners? Would the applicant like to, would the applicant please approach? Please state your full name and your address for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Taitler Merritt, 9339 Brighton Road, Henderson. I am the current CEO of Merit Trailers and one of the family members that are a part of the ownership group. We have been proud community members and operators of our business in Adams County for over 50 years, operating our trailer manufacturing and our parts and service business, serving the agriculture community as well as the truck transportation sector. This really, for us, is just purely sort of cleaning up over our history with this site, having first acquired the, the first lot back in 1970, and acquiring it from the Brantner family over, over a period of decades, recognized that we had this oversight where we had some lots on the site that were I-2 and some lots that were still zoned agriculture. So for us, this is just a matter of cleaning up. So thank you very much for, for your consideration.
Thank you, any questions for the applicant from the board? Do I see Commissioner Baca scrambling for the button? Commissioner Baca, go ahead and say.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Merritt, for being here. So you're changing it from an Ag 1 to an I-2, is it going to continue to operate under Merit Trailer? Is this an expansion for you, or?
It will continue to operate under Merit Trailers. So one of these lots, Lot 3, is, is unfinished. What we anticipate using that Lot 4 is for finished trailer storage. Lot 4 is currently used as a detention pond, so the, the one right there. No anticipated change in use for Lot 4.
Okay, thank you so much.
I don't have any questions, I don't see any hands being raised, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to, that signed up or would like to speak on this matter?
We do not have anyone signed up.
Okay, anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this particular matter, please come down. Nobody's running down? All right, bringing it back to the board for a motion or for action? Discussion and action.
Chair, if there isn't any further discussion, or I don't see any, I'd move to approve RCU 2022-34 Merit Trailers rezoning with four findings of fact and two notes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, we shall vote. All right, that passes unanimously, good luck with your project. Next up.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name's Leila Bajlon, I'm a senior long-range planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. In the case before you, is PRC 2022-3, this is Lowell Crossings, and it's located southwest of the intersection of Lowell Boulevard and West 68th Avenue. So within this case, there are two separate requests. The first request is for a rezone on 1.91 acres. The current zone district is Residential 1C, and the applicant is requesting a rezone to Residential 4. And then there is a minor subdivision final plat application, and this would combine four existing parcels into one 5.29-acre lot. The board may notice a discrepancy in the acreage. A portion of this property is already zoned as Residential 4, so it is not included in the rezone request. Only 1.91 of the 5.29 acres is included in the rezone request, but all four parcels are included. So this shows the location of the four existing parcels. They front along Lowell Boulevard, and they're located southwest of the intersection of West 68th Avenue and Lowell Boulevard. They're located directly to the north of the Highland Hills Ballfields here. And this is the area where unincorporated Adams County meets the City of Westminster. So all the properties to the north of the subject parcels are in the City of Westminster. Surrounding properties do contain a mix of zoning and land use, so there is a lot of multifamily located directly to the north in the City of Westminster. Properties within unincorporated Adams County are, there's some commercial directly to the east, and then there's a range of housing types within unincorporated Adams County. And then the Westminster Station can be seen in the northeast corner of this. So this provides a closer aerial image of the four existing parcels. Three out of the four are developed with single-family homes that are proposed to be demolished if this rezone is approved. And then the larger portion along Hidden Lake is currently vacant, and it does front along Hidden Lake. So the current zoning on the property, as mentioned, there are two zone districts here. So the larger portion is currently zoned as Residential 4. Our Residential 4 Zone District does allow for multifamily as a use by right. And then the three parcels that are along Lowell Boulevard are currently zoned as Residential 1C, which is exclusively single-family. Surrounding properties in unincorporated Adams County, again, have a mix of zone districts directly across the east, or directly to the east across Lowell Boulevard. There's commercial zoning and commercial development. And then all properties to the east of Lowell Boulevard and unincorporated Adams County are zoned as Residential 2 or Residential 3, which would allow for single-family duplexes and then multi, multifamily townhomes. And then all portions in white are within the City of Westminster. So the future land use designation on three out of the four parcels is urban residential. The urban residential future land use designation would support developments that provide dwelling units in one acre or larger. And then the western portion does have a perks and open space designation. And this application was applied for prior to the adoption of the 2022 Advancing Adams Conference of Plan. However, the 2022 Advancing Adams Conference of Plan does designate this area as mixed use, so it is both compliant with the 2012 and the 2022 comp plans within unincorporated Adams County. So the criteria of approval when considering a rezone request include that the request is consistent with the conference of plan, that the request is consistent with the development standards, that it complies with the development standards, and finally, that the request is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area. Staff does not consider the site plan in the request for a rezone as it is typically not binding with a rezone. We're considering the zone district and not necessarily the specific development. So it's important to look at the current zoning and what could be built on this property as it exists today. So this larger portion is currently zoned as Residential 4. This portion is 3.45 acres. So 120 dwelling units could be built on this portion by the lake as the zoning exists today. So the applicant is proposing to rezone the portion along Lowell Boulevard to Residential 4. And this would provide for a cohesive zone district on the one parcel that is being created. And this would allow for the multifamily development to be pushed up against Lowell Boulevard where it is more appropriate, would have direct access to Lowell Boulevard. So the criteria of approval when considering a minor subdivision final plat include that the request conforms with the subdivision design standards, that the applicant has provided documentation that demonstrates adequate water supply and adequate sewer service to service the proposed subdivision, that any soil or topographical conditions have been identified, that there's adequate drainage infrastructure in place, and adequate public infrastructure, which includes curb, gutter, and sidewalk. That the request is consistent with the conference of plan and any applicable subarea plans, that it's consistent with the development standards, and finally, that the request is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area. So this shows the final plat that was submitted by the applicant. This shows all four existing parcels being combined into one 5.29 acre parcel. Three of the four existing parcels are not within a platted subdivision, so a plat correction could not be done to combine the lot. So that's why the applicant was required to go through the minor subdivision final plat. Staff and the applicant have worked together. The applicant has heard the concerns of the neighbors and they are proposing that we add a plat note to the final plat that states that principal structures shall not extend further than 280 feet from the eastern property line. So I drew a line on the plat. This blue line is not included on the plat, but this would be a plat note. So when development is considered on this lot, principal structures could only be built on roughly this portion of the lot. There would be no principal structures allowed on this portion of the existing lot. Again, this blue line I just put in there to indicate where the 250 feet, or sorry, 280 feet from the eastern property line would be. And this just shows the aerial of where that 280 feet would be if the plat note is added. And this shows the conceptual site plan that was submitted by the applicant. Site plans are submitted to demonstrate the lot is buildable. However, they are typically not binding and staff does not have the ability to make the site plan binding with a rezone request. So the applicant is proposing a five-story multifamily building. The R4 zone district does allow for up to 35 dwelling units per acre. And at the time of change in use permit to go from single-family residential to multifamily, the applicant will have to demonstrate compliance with all of the required setbacks, height requirements, parking requirements, and landscaping requirements of the zone district. So when looking at the dimensional standards for the R4 zone district, there is a minimum lot size requirement of two acres and a minimum lot width requirement of 200 feet. The proposed law is 5.29 acres in size and has roughly 400 feet of lot width. So the proposed law is meeting all dimensional standards of the R4 zone district. Again, there is a maximum density of 35 dwelling units per acre in the R4 zone district and a minimum of 14 dwelling units per acre. And when the applicant does come in for building permits, if this rezone is approved, there would be a required setbacks of 25 feet, a rear of 20 feet, and then a side setback of 25 feet as well. And then the maximum height would be 70 feet within the R4. So here are a couple of images of the subject site. This is looking from Lowell Boulevard to the west. You can see Hidden Lake in the background. This is looking at a portion of the larger undeveloped portion of the site. This is looking to the north along Lowell Boulevard. The Westminster Station would be located northeast of the subject site. The existing single-family homes would be located on the left-hand side of the screen. And this was a snowy day, but there is sidewalk here along Lowell Boulevard. So during the referral period, staff notified all property owners and occupants within 1,000 feet of the subject site. We sent out a total of 556 notifications. And then there is a change from the original staff report that was submitted because we did receive two additional public comment on this case. So of the public comment, there was 13 unique commenters. Two of these comments were in support, noting that this would be an improvement in the area and could spur redevelopment. 21 of these comments were in opposition or they had concerns pertaining to the additional density, traffic congestion, and the pollution that would be created as a result. There's also concerns with access to the lake. And then the public had significant concerns over the site plan and the fact that the site staff did not have the ability to make the site plan binding. Additionally, we notified several referral agencies throughout this process and the city of Westminster is in opposition to this request, stating concerns for parking, compatibility with the city of Westminster comp plan. So the city of Westminster comp plan designates this area as low-density residential or agriculture, which is not compatible with what Adams County has in the future land use designation. And they also had concerns with density within the area. And then Adams County Fire and Rescue did have some initial concerns that would be addressed at the time of building permit and it's just to ensure adequate fire suppression and fire access for emergency. So this case was heard at the Planning Commission on March 23rd. The Planning Commission voted four to three to recommend approval of this request with 15 findings of fact and four notes to the applicant. There were three members of the public there to provide public comment. Two of these comments were neutral, but they had concerns related to the proposed development and the site plan that was proposed by the applicant. And then one comment was in opposition stating the potential for increased crime with this development. And then the Planning Commission did have concerns on the compatibility of this project with the area. And then the city of Westminster's opposition, along with, they had some concerns with development along the lake. Again, it's important to note that that is already zoned as Residential 4 and is not within this rezone request. Additionally, the city of Westminster was in attendance at the hearing but did not provide public comment. At the hearing, the Planning Commission had asked if the city of Westminster had any intentions of annexing this property. Based on the comments that were provided, I inaccurately stated that the city of Westminster did not have an interest in annexing. The city of Westminster sent an email to Adams County staff, to both Jen Rutter and myself, noting that it was inaccurate to state that the city of Westminster does not have an interest in annexing. But within this email, they did not provide information on whether they had an interest in annexing. So that correspondence has been included in your packet as well. So to provide a brief summary of this request, the proposed law is meeting all of the dimensional standards of the Residential 4 zone district. There is a minimum lot size of two acres and a minimum lot width of 200 feet, of which the proposed law is meeting. This request is compatible with the conference of plan as this location is designated as urban residential and within the 2022 conference of plan, this is designated as mixed use, which would support those higher-density residential applications. There is adequate water, sewer, and infrastructure for the proposed subdivision. Three, or this proposed lot would front along Lowell Boulevard and Crestview Water and Sanitation has committed to providing water and sewer services to the site. And this request is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area. And when considering the compatibility with the surrounding area, it's important to look at what is both within the city of Westminster and the development patterns and existing development within unincorporated Adams County. So this shows some development within the city of Westminster. This is located to the northwest corner of West 68th Avenue and Lowell Boulevard. This is an apartment complex that is four stories in height. Additionally, this is located directly to the north of the subject property. This would be the vacant portion along the lake. There are townhomes, which is considered multifamily in Adams County, as well as a multifamily senior living facility located directly to the north in the city of Westminster. And this is just an image to show you that apartment complex that is within the city of Westminster that's four stories in height. And then when looking at unincorporated Adams County, as the board knows, Lowell Boulevard has seen a significant amount of redevelopment, a lot of which has been higher-density residential. So when looking at some of the recent projects, there was a R3 rezone that was recently approved that does allow for townhomes along Lowell Boulevard. Clear Creek Valley was approved at the northwest corner of West 64th Avenue and Lowell Boulevard. This was approved for 124 duplexes. Baker School Apartments is located directly to the east of that project and this allowed for multifamily apartments as well. And then Berkeley Shores was approved just to the south of those developments and that allowed for single-family and multifamily townhomes. So staff today recommends approval of the subject request with 15 findings of fact, one condition precedent, and four notes to the applicant. Here are my recommended findings of fact. And then the recommended condition precedent has been added since the staff report went out. This just notes that the applicant shall provide to the Community and Economic Development Department a final plat with a plat note that states principal structures shall not extend further than 280 feet from the eastern property line. And then here are my recommended notes. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any commissioners have questions for staff? Commissioner Pinter.
Thank you. I did have a question for staff. I'm just kind of curious if you could, and if you'd want to defer some of these to the applicant, I understand. While we're generally familiar with the area and you do have good maps up here, what is the distance from this building to the train station?
The applicant does have a presentation and they have some really good illustrations in there to provide not only the distance, but also the walking distance to the station. So I can let the applicant address that question.
Okay, because it's really close, but I'm just kind of curious, like, how close is really close?
It is within the half-mile buffer.
That's what I thought. Okay. And then I had some questions about park amenities and public access to the park and how the parkland and open space was going to be finished. Would you prefer that I just hold those to the applicant?
Yes, the applicant would have that information. At the time of rezone, we don't necessarily have that information from staff.
Fair enough. And then is there anything in here about a percentage set aside for affordability or any affordability component?
I do not have that information as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait for the applicant.
Any other, Commissioner Baca?
Great, thank you, Chair. Just one quick question, Leila, and this is really for the record. This is a rezone only, just because it's generated a lot of questions and they're attached to the packet on parking. So that is not in this process. This is only the rezone and then that will become another process under building permits. Is that correct?
That is correct. So this is for a rezone and a minor subdivision final plat to combine the lots.
Perfect.
At the time of change in use permit, we would ensure that all parking requirements are being met.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other commissioners? And none. Okay. At this time, would the applicant please come forward and state your full name for the record and your address?
Good morning, commissioners. Eva Mather, Norris Design, 1101 Bannock Street, Denver, Colorado, 80204. Pleased to be here tonight on behalf of Westfield to present this exciting new development in Adams County. Before I get started, I want to be sure I thank staff for all of their help to get us here today, especially Leila for the great presentation. So thanks so much. We have a great team of consultants assembled for this project, also here this morning to answer any questions that you may have. We know that you are familiar with Westfield. Jonathan Alpert is here and could answer any questions you have specifically for the developer. But as you know, Westfield has been committed to Adams County for quite some time. Shown here are several projects that they're working on in Adams County. Standing Pivot, the old merchandise mart, Stanley Marketplace, and as well as Paycos Logistics Mart, Park, excuse me. But they're pleased to be bringing a new residential here along Lowell Boulevard. I think this is the site context that Leila was mentioning. As you can see, Westminster Station in the big orange circle and our site is in pink. It is half a mile as the crow flies, about a mile distance to the parking garage. I have some exhibits that'll show that. But Hidden Lake, it's adjacent to so much great existing infrastructure. So for multifamily and residential development, that is significant. It's touching Hidden Lake Park and will provide a necessary missing link to that trail access around the lake and additional recreation opportunities for the residents. It's a short walk to an elementary school and a high school and blocks from a dog park and the Little Dry Creek Trail, giving access to the whole metro area. Direct access onto Lowell Boulevard, minor arterial, gives great access for higher density. As we work through this development, we understand that the Hidden Lake, Hidden Lake is a private lake and Westfield has been working with that HOA to ensure that residents of this apartment building will not have direct access to the lake because it is private. And so we'll show you some of those details as we get into the presentation, but we've worked directly with those homeowners to make sure that we're doing some of the things that they've asked us to do. So as I mentioned, a great location in Westminster Station. To address your question, I mentioned this in the Planning Commission and I don't think that everyone believed me. So we included some Google access maps. It's roughly a 10, 11-minute walk to the station, a two-minute bike ride, and a three-minute drive, one mile, to get to the parking garage. And as you know, providing density near transit station is, near transit stations is not just an Adams County priority, but is largely becoming a focus for the region to create attainable housing with access to that regional transit. I'm going to cruise through some of these since you've seen it and I don't want to duplicate. Just another view of those existing lots. The zoning, proposed zoning, the old Adams County, the 2012 land use plan, and then that new land use plan showing the mixed-use development, as well as, I want to point out in both comp plans, open space identified in this area. But the other portion is in this, as a part of this mixed-use development, R4 is a supported zone district. I'm going too fast. Existing site conditions. So another couple images of the site that were taken on a, I guess, a less snowy day. But you can see some of those existing, oh gosh, sensitive little mouse here. Some of those existing buildings here that will need to be removed in order to make way. But right here along Lowell Boulevard and here you can see those townhomes and that providing a transition between townhome and Lowell Boulevard with a density transition with a multifamily building. And then those other apartments are located right up here. So here's our conceptual site plan. So we've taken this, I think, as far So we've taken this, I think, as far as we can as a part of this process and hoping for approval of this rezon today. Thirty-five dues per acre, 187 units, and a maximum of 70 feet. So we would adhere to all of those requirements as a part of the R4 rezon. The setbacks, 25 feet from Lowell Boulevard, we will meet, and 20 feet from the existing residential, we do exceed that. Here, as you can see, the building won't be located any closer than 45 feet, based on our current site plan, to provide some additional buffer from these existing townhomes. And as you can see, that plat note is approximately to right here. So that's where that 280 feet is from our property line to the edge of this drive. And we've provided additional buffer from this corner as well. So we look forward to working through the details of this plan as we get into that building permit design. The fencing, so I mentioned that there would be no access to the lake or limited access to the lake. In other areas of Hidden Lake, they have on the lakeside of their trail a split-rail fence. So we would meet a similar standard as that and provide this trail, as well as some landscaping, and a proposed fence to match that exist in other areas of the Hidden Lake Trail. The fence along, I guess it's our northern boundary here, the townhomes, southern boundary, is in really great shape, so we would propose that that could remain. The fence along our western boundary, their eastern boundary in this location, looks as though it is in need of repair, so we would propose replacing that fence in this location. Obviously, we would need to work with those homeowners on that, but we can work through that, I think, as we get through to building permit. Traffic impacts. Traffic is always a, you know, we study very closely. We have two accesses proposed, a right-in, right-out on our north side, a full movement on our south side, so we are providing great access. And our residential building is four stories over a parking garage, so four stories of residential over parking. So you can see we have these drives through here. We've tucked our parking underneath to help hide that from the residents and provide covered parking for our residents as well. This is the parking table. As we've worked through our conceptual plan today, we needed to prove out in our plan that we could meet the R4 parking standards, and we can. So that is the parking that we would propose, and it's based on the type of bedroom. So one-bedroom, two-bedroom, studio, we would meet those requirements. We did hold a neighborhood meeting, and we had a different plan at that time. So we made a number of changes to get to the plan that we have today to accommodate the comments that we heard. We tucked under that parking. We were showing surface parking, and we were showing surface parking adjacent to the lake, and that was not desirable. So we took that parking, and most of it, we placed under the building with a small handful of guest parking spaces on the north side. We also added that fencing adjacent to the trail based on their commentary to help prevent people, so that they know that you're not supposed to go from the trail to the lake to the water's edge, and try and prevent people from accessing that. There was a lot of discussion in the Planning Commission, and we received some additional good feedback, both from the Planning Commissioners as well as from the neighbors. The comments and commitments made at that time were the proposed fence to prevent access to the water's edge, that a management company for these apartments will ensure that residents cannot access the lake. The proposed fence along the northwestern section of the site is new, but we will work with that HOA to, on the details of that fence. And then the fence on the south side, that will remain. And then, of course, the note added to the plat. The biggest concern was that if the rezon were completed and for some reason, Westfield did not complete and execute on the site plan, that someone could come in and do a different plan and put buildings over the open space. So we've worked with staff, and we worked with the neighbors to provide that plat note. And we think that the note is a good one and will preserve the commitments made to the neighbors with the site plan. So wrapping up, we believe the site is ideally suited for multifamily, bringing necessary housing to the area, higher density along Lowell Boulevard, and access to so much great existing infrastructure that the county has provided, meets the goals for so many Adams County Housing Study, the Southwest Area Plan, the comprehensive plan, and providing diverse housing choices for the county. Promoting economic growth and urban growth near transit facilities, and preserving the open space adjacent to the lake, as well as making improvements for the public with additional trail access around that lake. We hope that you'll move to approve. And with that, we're available for any questions you may have.
Okay. Do I have any questions from the board? Commissioner Pinter.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for answering a lot of the questions that were coming up for me in your presentation. And when you're talking about the one mile to the parking garage, for folks who aren't familiar with the topography, the train itself is on the other side of the tracks from the garage, so for walkers, it'd be a lot closer. I think you said that it was, you said in the half-mile buffer is the crow flies, but a 12-minute walk?
It was a 10-minute walk. Based on Google Maps, yeah.
Yeah. That makes sense. I was curious, I thank you also for answering the type of fence, and while private lakes are kind of a peculiar concept, it is a thing, so it's not open for fishing or boating by people who aren't members of the Hidden Lake HOA. But just to confirm, the trail will provide access to the high school and will connect so that folks can walk along the waters at, you know, or like the 10, 15 feet up, but walk along the lake.
So there are some details that we'll need to get into when we get into that building permit, where that trail currently ends. At this point, I know that it picks up roughly in this area.
Right.
But if it's off our property, I know that we can provide it within our property.
Right.
And if it's off property, we would need to explore that.
I get that, but that trail does connect up to the high school, providing a path for folks. And so, and you're proposing an open space dedication, I saw formalizing that, which would make the trail accessible to anybody.
Yes.
Okay. And I saw that there was like a, what is that called? Like a, was that called, it's not a formal trail, but you can see the worn path, like social, thank you, social path. I was just phoning a friend there. There was a clear social path from all the images of folks already walking that way. So a formal trail and an open space dedication would make a lot of sense. And I appreciate some of the aesthetic improvements that you included as well. Are you proposing to add park, playground, any amenities for the residents? Or is that going to be included later?
That's, that would be included later. I think that at this time, we're proposing a trail and some landscaping, and there have been some preliminary conversations with Highland Hills about this open space, but nothing set in stone at this time.
Okay, because I do see there is lake park across the way, and obviously, there is a 40-acre park at the train station, but you haven't financially participated in building any of those amenities. And so I'm just kind of curious if there's a commitment to adding some park, playground equipment, amenity type, something.
I think that at the time of building permit, there'll be more studies done about the type of residents that will live in these apartments. So if there'll be, you know, a significant number of kids that are planned, then I think playground amenities would make sense in some of these spaces. There will be a pool provided, I believe that's correct, a pool provided onsite. Thank you. And as well as some other resident amenities, but are you asking about public amenities? Just for the residents?
Yeah.
Okay. So there would be amenities provided based on the market that would live there. Yeah.
Okay. And then do you have any proposals or thoughts on the affordability of this development?
I'm going to let Jonathan answer that question, so.
Okay, Jonathan, please come down, state your full name for the record and your address.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Jonathan Alpert, 4221 Brighton Boulevard, Denver 80216. So on the affordability component, really, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Really, where we've been focused is on 80% to 120% AMI, utilizing 2022's numbers, and we'll continue to follow 2023's numbers, but really trying to focus on workforce. And that's really been our priority. So in lieu of dedicating for affordability, it's really been driven by a workforce notion.
Okay. And so that's going to be included in your pricing as opposed to like a deed restriction or any kind of other restriction?
That's exactly right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board for the applicant? Nope, seeing none. Thank you very much. This time, would we, Erica, could you please call the first person on the list?
Yes, the first and only person is Rick Mayo that has signed up.
Okay, sir, if you would please come down, state your full name for the record and your address. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Richard Mayo, 5130 West 69th Place in Westminster. I've worked with staff and the developer quite a bit on this, and it's come a long way since we started. When I was going through your packet, I saw on my communication, I was almost boring myself reading it. You know, so I appreciate that that got carried on to everybody. When the project started, there was housing, you know, basically all along the lake frontage. And what they've done is they've basically taken the townhomes and stuff that was going to be along the lake and pushed all of that density to Lowell where it made more sense. So it has better access to Lowell, and it leaves the open space along the lake. And I've been the HOA president on the North Hidden Lake HOA for over 20 years, and I manage the lake for the lake owners. I can kind of speak for both sides here, that it's nice to leave that area open. And, you know, one of our main concerns was that this project would end up somewhere along the way, growing west anyway, but putting that 280-feet note in there kind of solved that problem. And as far as the actual project, we understand that it might change a little bit, but as long as it's on Lowell, it really doesn't create any issues with the lake. The fence on the Hidden Lake Ball Field side, there didn't used to be a fence, and kids and adults were climbing down the riprap to go down in the water and stuff, and it was just an accident waiting to happen. They put up a six-foot chain-link fence along the lake, problem solved. So on this side, if we do, you know, if they do put in that connecting trail to invite the public through, I mean, right now, it's a social trail, and not everybody knows it's there, so it really doesn't attract anybody. You put a trail in there that shows up on the trail map, and now we have an attractive nuisance. But if we put that same six-foot fence between that trail and the lake, we don't have the problem that developed over the Ball Field site. So that's a good thing. Overall, with all the changes that they made and putting that 280-foot note in there, I support the project. I support the rezoning.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't see any questions from the board. Any other folks that are signed up?
That was everyone.
Is there anyone else in the audience that did not sign up but would still like to speak on this matter? Okay, bringing it back to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make a motion if I could have the correct screen, just to make sure I get my verbiage right. While we're doing that, again, thank you for the split-rail fencing, that nice visual barrier, but aesthetically integrated with community, and all the work you've done in general. So thank you, obviously. Lot of communication back and forth.
I move to approve the subject request, PRC 2022-3, with 15 findings of fact, one condition precedent, and four notes to the applicant.
Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
Chair, I'd like to second that. Before we vote, I just want to thank the developer and the community for coming forward. I think a lot of, this has evolved, obviously, over time, and I really appreciate the solutions-based project that you're proposing.
Okay.
It's possible Mr. Mayo is the best HOA manager like anyone's ever seen.
All right, it passes unanimously. Congratulations, good luck on your project. Thank you for working with the neighbors. And Mr. Mayo, thank you guys for being engaged. Thank you. With that, I believe we are adjourned.